Good morning. This is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners for December 14th, 2018. I'm Commissioner Bud Blake, Chair of the Board this year. I'd like to... My apologies. We'll start over. This is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners for Friday, December 14th, 2018. We are going to have adoptions of certain parts of the budget today. Before we do, I'd like to do a few introductions. I am Commissioner Bud Blake, Chair of the Board this year. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards. To my right is Commissioner John Hutchings. His right is Labanina Bomar, Clerk of the Board. To her right is Romero Chavez, County Manager. And his right is the Budget Officer and Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell. So with that in mind, I'll just go straight through the agenda. And the first item we have is from the Community Planning and Economic Development. It is the 2019 Thurston County Heritage Grant Award. We have the Director for the CPED, otherwise known as Community Planning and Economic Development, Mr. Josh Cummings, to give a little bit of background on the Heritage Grant Awards. Josh?
Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, I am Joshua Cummings, the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. Within CPED, we have multiple volunteer boards and commissions. One of those is the Historic Commission, made up of citizens who get together to do a number of items addressing our historic and rural character of Thurston County. One of the programs that they have is the Heritage Grant Program that's funded through a directive from the Board of County Commissioners to the Historic Commission. The Historic Commission is your first line of review on applications for historic, excuse me, heritage grants. There is a limit for the Historic Commission to provide grants up to $5,000 for each application, but the Board of County Commissioners can make adjustments on those funds at your will. The motion in front of you today is based on information that was provided to the Board of County Commissioners by the Historic Commission within the last week, I guess. And they took all of the applications that they received, ranked them with a scoring procedure that they have, and provided those recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. And so the action in front of you today reflects that recommendation, as well as, I believe, some other input that has been provided.
Any comments, questions?
Yes, Josh, would you explain where this money is coming from that we're doing today? And if you can, I'll call on the County Manager if you're not exactly up to it.
I've got the high level, but you've got better experts here from our Budget Office that could explain that better.
Okay.
So the revenue for this program comes from recording fees on documents that are recorded in the Auditor's Office, all types of documents. There's a $5 recording fee. $2 stays with the county auditor for preservation of all records of the county. $2 goes to the state, and $1 goes into the Historic Preservation Fund to be used on just preserving historic structures, sites, history throughout the county.
And that is to be used exclusively for this type of activity?
Yes. It may not be used for other purposes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And Josh, I'm sorry. About, well, number one, how many on the Commission, Historic Commission, and total, how many, approximately, how many applicants do you get to whittle it down to five or six?
So there's, I think, I believe, eight current positions filled on the Historic Commission. We're always looking and accepting more folks to join and participate in those programs. This year, I believe that the Commission received 14 applications for funding, and were able to fund six. Another part of the, I guess, guidelines that the Board of County Commissioners provided to the Historic Commission is a budget of, for the 2018 year funding, was a budget of up to $30,000. So 5,000 per application, up to 30,000 total. Again, with your, the Board of County Commissioners' input, you could raise those limits, but that's what the Historic Commission is, their purview.
So it's pretty tough trying to whittle that down to a manageable sum to award a grant.
Yeah, they put a lot of time and work into this, and they have subcommittees that meet and discuss the different benefits, and if the project is, the funding is going to be used in a way that's going to complete the project as one of the criteria, or move the project along, or its historic significance to our community. So that's what is reflected here, is their ranking on that process.
Good. And I like our Historic Commission, nice people, smart people. Thank you.
Romero?
As a follow-up to what Josh mentioned, the Historic Commission provided a recommendation about six projects that had $30,000. During the conversation, the Commission would like to add an additional project for $2,200. So the motion before you includes that addition. So just going to make sure that they have the recommendation by the...
I have to start all over again, sorry.
Please.
Just like to follow up and clarify, but Josh Cummings mentioned to you, the recommendation by the Historic Commission to you was to fund six projects for a total of $30,000. That's the budget allocation that you have stated for 2018. However, during the conversation, the Board suggested to include an additional project to the YWCA for $2,200. So the motion before you includes that addition for your consideration.
Very good.
I appreciate why you had your microphone off, because I know you're concerned about feedback with your lit jacket. So I'm glad I didn't interfere with that at all.
Thank you for noticing, Commissioner. I was, I was wondering.
Any other comments?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the 2019 Thurston County Heritage Grant Awards for the following: Olympia Film Society, City of Lacy, Lacy Museum, Olympia Tumwater Foundation, City of Rainier, the Sandman Foundation, and Northwest Institute for Leadership and Change, each for $5,000. And accept the Historic Commission recommendation to also fund the YWCA Olympia for $2,200. Total Heritage Grant Awards, $32,200.
Second?
It's been moved to second. It is stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You bet. Thank you, Josh. So the next item we have here is on, from the Commissioners, and Robin Campbell is here to give us a little bit about the adoption of the 2019-2024 Capital Facilities Plan and the Transportation Improvement Plan.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. And what we'll be doing for pretty much the rest of this afternoon are walking through budget items, resolutions, and ordinances that are necessary to implement the budget and the budget itself. So there are quite a few resolutions. I'll tell you a little bit about them. And then what we have done, just so the audience and our viewing public knows, is we have, there are about 25 separate resolutions that we are going to ask you to approve related to the budget. So we have bundled them into topic areas, and there are only about eight motions that you'll need to make, but I will describe each of the resolutions as we go. So beginning with the Capital Facilities Plan and the Transportation Improvement Plan. The Capital Facilities Plan is part of the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan. We are required by law to review the Capital Facilities Plan every year, at least once a year, and to adopt it along with the budget. The plan itself is not a budget. It is a plan, but it does include every anticipated capital project that the county will work on in the next two years. And the law states that if a capital project is not on our Capital Facilities Plan, we can't do it. So this is an extremely important document. Staff have had to look out over the next two years and anticipate what we'll need. You can make emergency amendments if we have to, but those should be limited. So this plan, it anticipates road projects, bridge projects, culverts, buildings, county buildings, sewer systems, all the different types of projects, sidewalks, whatever, is included in this plan. And the plan also has the anticipated funding source for each of these projects. It's a six-year plan. We have aligned it to our capital budget. And what you'll see is the first two years in the plan are aligned and reflect the two years of the budget. So as you approve this plan, the first two years are in the budget that you'll adopt. A public hearing was held on December 3rd, and we received no public comment. On the Transportation Improvement Program, RCW 3681121 requires that the Board approve this plan, which has to do mainly with roads, but also other public works projects related to transportation throughout the county. It also is a six-year plan. We have aligned it with our capital budget and with the Capital Facilities Plan, so it all lines up. And a public hearing on this was held on October 30th. Also, no comment that I'm aware of on this plan. I would mention that this plan includes the anticipation of transportation benefit district revenue, but any projects related to that revenue will not commence unless the TBD Board takes action at some time to create the revenue. So that's in there, but it's provisoed to be held until that Board takes action. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about those two items.
No, sir.
I do. Number one, you mentioned right up front, Robin, that if it's not in the Capital Improvement Plan, we can't do it.
That's right.
However, if it's in there, we're not obligated or obliged to do it, right?
That is exactly right, yes.
Okay. And so the TBD, Transportation Benefit District, is separate from the Transportation Improvement Plan?
So we have those items in these plans so that should revenue begin, you would not have to update the plans. Because the plans can't be updated easily. There's a huge process that goes into the plans, especially the Capital Facilities Plan has to go to the Planning Commission. There's a big public hearing process. They're, they're very hard to amend. So what we've done is include that in these plans. In the event the Transportation Benefits District Board should take action, then it would be easy to roll these out. But they, they will not be done until such action is taken.
They are the placeholders.
Yes, they are placeholders. That's an excellent term.
All right, thank you.
All right. So that gets us with 2A. Is there a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt the 2019 to 2024 Capital Improvement Facilities Plan and the 2019 to 2024 Transportation Improvement Plan.
Second?
It's been moved to second. It is stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries, Robin. So we've got 2B, which is the adoption of the Internal Rate Service Rates for Indirect Cost Plan and Equipment Rental and Revolving Fund.
Right. So these items are related to internal services. And you'll remember that internal services is where the customer or recipient of the service is another county office or department. So these are things like human resources, the processors, the prosecutors, Civil Division, the treasurer who banks our money, all those types of services where a county department's only customers are other county offices or departments. Best practices in governmental accounting suggest that you spread those costs through indirect rates to all funds throughout the county. So, and state law authorizes, the Board of County Commissioners, to determine those charges that are charged to restricted funds. A few we can't. They're stated by law, but by and large, we allocate these types of costs to every office and department and supporting fund across the county. In accordance with RCW 4209210, we use fair and equitable allocation. And I would say that the allocation methods used by our county are in accordance with best practices in accounting. So that's the Indirect Cost Plan. In the Equipment and Rental Revolving Fund, which we call ERNR for E's...
I was wondering what that R is.
Yeah, the ERNR, it's Revolving Fund. That's the title in state law. It's interesting. And again, state law, Chapter 3633A in the RCW, requires that counties establish an ERNR fund. So it's not an option, and they require that you set rates in accordance with the law. So this resolution sets those rates. It's mainly for what's referred to as rolling stock in the county. Those are our cars, trucks, large equipment in public works, all that equipment that is big and expensive and that we have to have to keep the county operational. So this resolution sets the rates in accordance with the law, and it authorizes the equipment purchases for all those items that'll come due in the next two years. It funds a maintenance and operation account, because we do the vast majority of our own work onsite by county staff, and it also funds an equipment reserve. So when it's time to replace that truck, or the tractor, or the yard goat, there is money that's saved up, and we don't have to borrow money to go out and purchase these items. So all of those are within the ERNR rates.
Any comments, questions?
Yes, I have a process question. As we move forward with these resolutions that we're approving, do we need to refer to them by number during this process?
No, you do not need to refer to them by number. I have written the recommended motions so that you refer to each of the resolutions by its nature, if you will. So you are covering all your bases.
Thank you very much.
The board will assign a number of the resolutions later.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I have not heard the term yard goat in about 45 years. That brought back fond memories, so thank you for that.
So just a little side story about, I think it was about four years ago, the Public Works came forward and asked for a yard goat. And, you know, the picture in my head was, are they, they want live goats? How will we keep them, you know? And so I had some education necessary to find out what a yard goat was.
Back to my, yeah, working at my dad's trucking company when I was late teens. Oh my goodness, great to hear that. Thank you, deja vu. My question is, we have a total of 11 of these budget items, and do you want to explain to the public why we're not doing it as consent, why we're doing each one individually?
So the most important reason that we're doing them, where I'm describing each one, is for transparency's sake.
Yeah.
We want the public to know what we're doing, so we're carefully outlining what each of these items are. We have had them available for public review. They've been out for public comment. We've held public hearings on the vast majority of these items. Those that weren't available for public hearing were, are, just clean up, if you will, administrative things like abolishing a fund. But for the most part, all of this has been available to the public. And we do them one by one so that the Board knows what, you know, want to know what you're voting on, and we want the public to know what you're voting on.
Thank you. And I knew that. And I don't know what the previous commissions, way back what they did, if it was just consent or like this, but I like this where it's complete transparency.
Thank you. It has never been a simple consent. I've, I've outlined them all. There have been less motions in the past, but, you know, we, we make sure that people know what we're doing here.
Good. Thank you, Robin.
I would just like to point out to the public that over the last few months, staff has been working diligently on this and have been briefing the Board. And we've had many discussions during work sessions that were open to the public. And so, in continuation of that open government, if you will.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion?
I move to adopt the Internal Service Rates for 2019-2020 Indirect Cost Plan and the 2019-2020 Equipment Rental and Revolving Fund.
Second?
It's been moved to second. It is stated. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, and that motion carries. And we are on to 3C. Yes, no, 2C. 2C, which is to adopt the increases to rates and charges for water and sewer services in Lake Management District.
Okay. So on the increases of fees, there are three items that you are considering this morning. The first is an ordinance related to water and sewer rates. The county owns water and sewer systems in Boston Harbor, Grand Mound, Tam O Shan, and Beverly Beach. Have I hit them all? I think so. In each of these systems, both water and sewer, the rates will be increased by 5%. And in Boston Harbor, the base rate is increasing by 20% in each, the 5% and the 20% are in each of the next two years. So a 5% increase in 2019, and then another 5% in 2020. And this is necessary to collect sufficient money to keep these systems operational and in good repair. The next one is on the Long Lake, Lake Management District. Oh, by the way, the, on the water and sewer rates, a public hearing was held on October 9th. For the Long Lake, Lake Management District, the public hearing was part of the revenue hearing on November 29th, and the rate increase for Long Lake is proposed to be increased by 3%. In the Lake, Lawrence Lake Management District, also part of the revenue hearing on November 29th, the rate increase there is also proposed to be 3%. Happy to take any questions that you may have?
Nope. We've covered it all in work sessions. Thank you very much.
All right, is there a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt ordinances increasing rates for water and sewer services and Lake Management District rates for Long Lake and Lawrence Lake.
Second?
It's been moved to second. It is stated. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, and that motion carries for 2C. Now we move on to 2D. 2D is the position and compensation changes related to the 2019-2020 budget.
Okay, the personnel actions, there are four resolutions. The first is to set the salaries for non-union county employees. The Board is authorizing by this motion a 3% cost of living increase for all non-union employees in the county. This includes classified employees, employees in your management and technical pay plan, employees in your at-will pay plan, and those attorneys who are nonrepresented in the defense and the prosecuting offices. So that is a 3%. The attachment to this, which is available to the public online, shows the salary range for every position in class that is affected by this motion. The second resolution creates new employee classifications in public works. That new classification series is utilities operator. As our public works director reviewed the necessary skills for taking care of our utilities, we found that a classification that required certain types of certifications were desirable. This changes the current utility technician series to utility operator series, and it gives the director of public works the authority, delegated authority, that once a person, say, in the operator, utility operator 1 class gains the necessary certifications, the director will be able to automatically promote that person to the next level up. So from a 1 to a 2, or a 2 to a 3. The, let's see, what else did I want to tell you about this? The classification and pay plan are online and available to the public. Oh, and everyone who's currently in that series, who does not have the proper certifications, will have one year to gain them to retain their, their jobs and get the benefit from the cost increase, the pay increase. So that is Resolution 15700. The next resolution is setting the annual salaries for the elected offices of assessor, auditor, clerk, treasurer, coroner, prosecuting attorney, and the sheriff. The salaries commission for elected officials sets the salaries for county commissioners. The commissioners have no say in what that salary is set at, but you do need to adopt a resolution setting the salaries for other electeds in the county other than the judges. So this resolution follows the recommendation of the Salary Commission. The assessor, auditor, clerk, treasurer, and coroner salaries are increased by 3.5%. The prosecuting attorney is increased by 2%, and the sheriff is increased by 7%. So that is, again, in accordance with the recommendation of the Salary Commission. The next resolution in this group is the, what's called Position Control. That document makes numerous changes to positions throughout the county. During the budget process, you reviewed just a lot of changes. This, this is actually a banner year, if you will, for changes in positions. You've added a few new positions, not a lot, but there are a few new positions. You have changed positions from part-time to full-time, or increased to some degree the amount. There are positions that have been abolished. You have positions where you have abolished end dates. You have positions where you have imposed new end dates. And there are a lot of positions that are shifted between departments. So in creating the new Information Technology Department, for example, those staff are coming out of the Central Services Department going into the new department. You have transferred the treatment sales tax program from the Commissioner's Office to Public Health. All of those actions have to be formally authorized by the Board. They are reflected in Position Control. And again, the, the details are available for public review. It's all online. And you have heard, as Commissioner Edwards has mentioned, we've held numerous work sessions, and you've reviewed each of these actions. So that are all of the items. Those are all of the items under Personnel Actions.
Any comments, questions? Sure.
Would you say that by taking many of these actions that were assisting the county and its ability in regard to labor retention and recruiting and efficiencies, I guess, due to the, due to the economy, the labor force is stretched quite thin right now, and we need to remain competitive in seeking new employees as people retire?
I would absolutely... I would absolutely say that that is the case. We, one of our strategic initiatives in our new strategic plan is to retain a high quality, you know, attract and retain a high-quality workforce. Part of that involves pay. So taking this step to both acknowledge the costs of our current employees and to be able to attract new employees to the county, having appropriate job classes with the job descriptions well-defined, all of these things help to attract and retain a high-quality workforce.
Thank you.
With regard to Resolution Number 15701, setting annual salaries for certain elected officials, we accept, and we're pretty mandated to accept, the recommendations of the Salary Commission. And this board tried in the, with the intent of helping not only the budget but also employees, we were prepared as a board to take zero COLA or zero adjustment at all until our legal representation said, "You can't do that by law. You have to." And we don't get to vote on our salary. But yet, I read letters to the editors and get emails and hear it, read in the paper, the commissioners voted themselves an increase. And I want the people to know that's absolute false.
Yep.
That's not the case. And we did our best to come up with a zero-sum increase for us. And I'm not saying that just to show benevolence, but we put our money where the budget is and employees are. And we tried our best, but it didn't, it didn't work out. So you concur. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt Resolutions 15699, setting compensation for non-union employees, 15700, creating new employee classifications, 15701, setting annual salaries for certain elected officials, and 15702, which adds, deletes, and makes changes to positions in county offices and departments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded as stated. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. And that motion carries. So we'll move on to 2E, which is to adopt the 2019-2020 operating and capital budgets. And I'll give it back to you.
Great. Thank you. So this, this is the star attraction of the day, if you will. And I've said this before, but I want to mention again, my deep appreciation to staff across the county. This is a huge document. The resulting budget book is over 300 pages. There are thousands and thousands of line items in the budget, and it takes a lot of work. We started back in February. The county starts work on the budget almost immediately after the budget is passed. We're working on the next one. And the work continues throughout the year. So I deeply appreciate all of the staff throughout the county that worked on it. I have a special appreciation for the budget team, who is here with us today. Yep, they do incredible work. And then my appreciation also to the board and the county commissioner, who sits through hours and hours of work sessions. And I know the budget is not the most interesting thing you do, but from my point of view, it is the most important thing that you do. So you have spent tons of time. So I believe you know this budget inside out.
Yeah.
So the public hearings on the budget were held on December 3rd and 4th. The total budget revenue is approximately $294 million in 2019, $298 million in 2020. Expenditures are more than the revenue in both those years. In total, $305 million in 2019, two, no, $302 million in 2020. The general fund follows the same pattern. We anticipate revenue of $97 million in 2019 and just over $100 million in 2020. And by the way, I think we top $100 million in revenue for the first time. Expenditures, 99, almost 90, almost $100 million in 2019 and $101 million in 2020 in the general fund. We are able to do this by using fund balance, basically. I believe that these are responsible budgets. They are responsive to the needs of our county, our county-elected and appointed offices and departments. But I would also say that we need to carefully monitor these budgets and, as we continue into the future, look for ways to improve revenue or improve efficiencies in our offices and departments. Because the, while the economy is very strong today, it will eventually soften, as the economy tends to do. It goes in cycles. So that's the operating budget. The capital budget, revenue in 2019 is estimated at $28 million. And in 2020, revenue is $263 million. Now, the reason that both these amounts are higher than they usually are is that in 2019, we anticipate issuing bonds, general obligation bonds, for the expansion of the jail to be able to house, appropriately house, our female and our special needs inmates. And in 2020, we anticipate issuing bonds to be able to build a new county courthouse because the one we're in today is costing more to maintain than it would to build a new facility, basically. There are missing safety features. There are many maintenance problems with the buildings that we're in. That is why the revenue is, seems very high. Expenditures in 2019 are $32 million, and in 2020, only $49 million because we'll just be getting going on the courthouse project. But we need to get those bonds issued to be able to do the project. So that's why your capital budget. The capital budget also, again, reflects what was in the capital facilities plan, the CFP, and the transportation improvement plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about either the operating or the capital budget.
Comments, questions?
No, sir.
Big ones, any questions?
Yeah, just real quick, just a comment that you are absolutely right. After 300 pages and thousands of line items, this is not the most exciting thing that we do, but it is the most critical and vital. And with you and your team and across the county, the financial folks, and County Manager Chavez, his explanation and guidance well, well suits me and helps me considerably in this area.
Yes, sir. Maybe I'd make one comment, that it's a continuing challenge as we end up being faced regularly with unfunded mandates, either from the federal or state level. And that, that challenge at some point will be insurmountable. Just let it go.
And I would just echo some of the comments that, my fourth year here, working not only with you and the county manager and the budget staff and all the finances that go off in the auditor's world, it really comes to a closure of great professionalism and dedication. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt the 2019-2020 operating and capital budgets.
It's, I'll second that. It's amazing that the shortest motion is the most money.
I noticed that when I was writing this, but what else do you say?
That should be the template.
So it's been moved and seconded to adopt the 2019-2020 operating and capital budgets. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. And that motion carries. So that takes care of 2E. We'll move on to 2F. And 2F is an action to create, abolish, and modify county funds. What is this all about?
Okay, well, this is a long list of funds that do exactly as you say, and I'll walk through each one. So the first resolution creates the courthouse project fund. That fund will, it is both necessary and desirable. It's necessary because when we issue bonds, we are required by the IRS to keep those in a discreet account so that we're able to show the IRS that we use them on non-taxable purposes. Because we, for the most part, issue tax-exempt general obligation bonds. And we have to track them and show that we're not earning money on them. So we need it. And then it is also highly desirable to track all of the costs of this project in one place. This is going to be the single biggest capital project that the county has ever undertaken. So we'll want to be able to track the costs in a separate fund. The second resolution establishes the environmental health fund. We were talking a little earlier when you met as the Board of Health about the environmental health fund fees. Because this is a fee-driven program, we want to track those fees separately to be able to carefully account for them and show that the expenditures attached are equal to or less than the amount of revenue that we receive. Because under state law, you can't earn more revenue than your expenditures when you charge fees to the citizens. So that fund is being extracted, if you will, from the current public health fund so that we are able to track it in a more appropriate manner. The next one establishes two funds, both related to information technology. The first is Information Technology Operations Fund. The second is the Information Technology Reserves Fund. These are attached to the creation of a new information technology department. And they are internal service funds. We need them to be able both to track the costs for that and to bill out those rates, like we talked about earlier. So these are coming out of funds that are currently established in central services. The next one is the Treatment Sales Tax Fund. Is transferred from the Board of County Commissioners to Public Health. That reflects the change in the organizational structure. The Treatment Sales Tax Program was shifted earlier in the year to Public Health. This is the cleanup, if you will, of the accounting side of the House. And the shift was made to better align the program with other public health functions in the county. The next item is the Veterans Assistance Fund. This seems very technical because while it stayed in its own umbrella department, we are shifting the department number. We account for Public Health in Department 40 and Social Services in Department 41. So the Veterans Fund is being moved from the Public Health Department to the Social Services Department. This is technical in nature. It's even hard to have to say all that, but that's what's happening in this particular resolution. The next one is for the Storm and Surface Water Utility. It's moving from the Community Planning and Economic Development Department to Public Works. And then the one after that is Storm and Surface Water Capital Fund, also moving from Community Planning and Economic Development to Public Works. Both of these items, again, reflect an organizational structure change where part of the program for Storm and Surface Water is moving out of CPED to Public Works to better align the program and more efficiently operate it. Then we have the General Obligation Bond Fund is being abolished for General Obligation Bonds 2007 and the fund that tracked General Obligation Bonds 2009. We have spent all of that money on appropriate projects, so we no longer need these funds. And best practices in accounting say that you abolish funds that you don't need. The next one is the Road Improvement District Number 2 Fund, also recommending to be abolished. Now, I found out some information for you about that fund. And it was interesting what I found. So the fund was established in December of 2000, and the Road Improvement District Number 2 was established after quite a few appeals in June 19th, 2001. So the assessment was to fund the Sunrise Beach Landslide Mitigation Project. That was partially funded through a $500,000 loan from the Washington State Public Works Trust Fund. We had to repay that loan. And this fund, the Road Improvement District Number 2 Fund, was established to process those debt payments. By law, we are required to have separate funds for debt payment. So that's what that fund was all about. The loan has been completely paid off. The project is paid. The assessment is finished, and we should abolish this fund. Then we are abolishing the 2010 Debt Holding Fund. Again, we brought the money in. We've paid it out. We finished that. And the same with the Olympic View Debt Service Fund. That loan has been completely, or the debt has been completely paid off. That is the list. And we're trying to speed through the rest of these. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Want to comment right here?
Just quickly, just for clarification, I don't want the public to think that we're getting ahead of ourselves in process. So when it comes to Resolution 15705, I believe that was the courthouse project.
Yes.
You said, "When we do something on that bonds." I believe, I think that means when and if we do something. We haven't made that determination yet at this point. And I just wanted to let the public know that we're not ahead of the process that's laid out.
Yes, that is a good point. And, and I would say, we are currently spending a very small amount of money on the assessment of sites and other items that the public has seen. We want to be able to track those even now. But should the initiative not go forward, then we would just close this fund out.
Kind of another placeholder, if you will.
Yep, we're setting it up so that it's there when you need it.
And just very quick confirmation, maybe, where it says Olympia View debit service funds. Is that Olympic View? It seems like I had some reading material.
Olympic View, yes.
That it was Olympic View.
Did I say Olympia?
Well, it says Olympia in the motion, and I just wanted to clarify.
I am so sorry. That should be Olympic.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Typing fast.
Good aye. Thank you. I have nothing.
All righty. Is there a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt Resolutions 15705 through 15716, which creates the courthouse project, environmental health, information technology operations, and information technology reserve funds, transfers the Treatment Sales Tax, Veterans Assistance, Storm and Surface Water Utility, and Storm and Surface Water Capital Funds between departments, and abolishes debt-related funds for the 2007 General Obligation Bonds, 2009 General Obligation Bonds, Road Improvement District Number 2, and 2010 Debt Holding, and the Olympic View Debt Service Funds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded as stated. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. And that motion carries. That completes 2F. And we'll move on to 2G, which is to transfer interest earnings to the general fund.
Right. So the So the Board of County Commissioners is authorized by law to have money earned on county funds. The treasurer invests the funds, we earn money on them. That's the interest earning. And the board is able to say, with very few restrictions, that if interest is accumulated on money earned in a restricted fund, that that can be deposited into the general fund. So that's what this action does. For these funds that are listed, Detention Facility Sales Tax, Conservation Futures, Real Estate Excise Tax, first and second quarter, the Storm and Surface Water, both utility and capital, and the Unemployment Compensation Funds, the board is choosing to add those funds to the list of funds where the interest is what we call sweep the interest, so it's swept into the general fund.
Any comments, questions?
Nope.
Is there a motion?
And it's too bad that is necessary to continue to function.
It is.
But it's reality.
It's going to add up, though, to about $400,000, and it's the way you create capacity for increasing costs in the general fund.
So I move to approve the transfer of interest earned and on the Detention Facilities Sales Tax, Conservation Futures, Real Estate Excise Tax, first and second quarters, Storm and Surface Water Utility, and Capital and Unemployment Compensation Funds to the general fund.
Second.
It's been moved as second as stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. So now we move on to 2H, which is, this is to establish the Information Technology Department.
Okay, so information technology is currently a unit within central services. The county is growing more and more dependent on information technology to operate our businesses, to interact with the citizens. It's just simply a critical part of local government. And I'd say that was true not only in Thurston County, but in all local governments across the nation. So our information technology is, in some cases, out of date and needs modernization.
Overhauled.
Yes, overall.
Overhauled.
Yes, throughout the county. We have aging systems.
Yes.
And they need to be updated, and that is no small undertaking and no small amount of money. So to elevate the importance and attention for information technology, the board is choosing to establish a separate Department of Information Technology outside of central services. That's what this action does.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
No, sir. I believe that's your babywic. You put that together, and I'll let it ride. I do not have the expertise in this particular area.
Okay, how about you, sir?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move to create the Information Technology Department.
Second.
It's been moved as second to move to create the Information Technology Department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries.
All right. So we are through the resolutions for the ensuing biennium. Now we're going to come back to the current fiscal year, and I am asking that you adopt the final budget amendment, Amendment Number Seven, for the 2017-2018 biennium. This is to make technical corrections. It authorizes certain grants that we've received to suspend those, and then it covers certain shortfalls in the county. I've gone into this in depth, so I will just say that in the general fund, expenditures are increased by $940,000. Revenue is increased by $962,000, so they're just about break even. In other funds, the increase in revenue is $1.2 million. The increase in expenditures is $4.2 million. This in part reflects the establishment of certain funds and having to make transfers. It also reflects increased prices in certain things like risk costs. But overall, the county is in a good position to sustain these costs.
No questions.
Nope.
Is there a motion?
I move to adopt, I'm sorry, I move to approve a resolution to adopt Budget Amendment Number Seven, including attachments A and B.
Second.
It's been moved as second as stated. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Paul, that motion carries.
Okay.
Excuse me, I didn't hear it. Go ahead.
Ready? So the last two items on the list are for the Tourism Promotion Area. We'll speak to both of them at once. The first is the 2018 Budget Amendment. The board has an agreement with the cities, and the Tourism Promotion Area is established by the hoteliers in the county to create a fund where all of the proceeds are used on marketing and tourism promotion. We are a pass-through. The money can't go directly to the Visitor and Convention Bureau because they are not a government organization, and this is a tax. So the county receives the tax money and passes it directly through to the VCB to be the administrator of these funds. The first item reflects that we are bringing in more revenue than we anticipated, which is a good thing. So we need to increase the budget authority to pass all of the money through. And then the second item is the approval of the budget for the TPA for the next fiscal year. So those are regarding both motions.
Comments, questions?
Again, many work sessions have elapsed, and no, I have no questions.
No questions.
Is there a motion to adopt 2J first?
Yep. Move to approve the 2018 Amendment for the Thurston County Tourism Promotion Area's Destination Marketing Organization, the Olympia-Lacey-Tomwater Visitor and Convention Bureau.
Second.
It's been moved as second as stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Did you have 2K, did you want to remark on also, Robby?
I think those remarks covered 2K as well.
Okay, is there a motion for 2K?
Move to approve the 2019 Budget for the Thurston County Tourism Promotion Area's Destination Marketing Organization, the Olympia-Lacey-Tomwater Visitor and Convention Bureau.
Second.
It's been moved as second as stated. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, and that motion carries as well. Okay, is there any other comments you need to make?
Just wrap-up comments. Again, I truly appreciate all staff who worked on this budget and the, all of the hours that the board put into the budget. And on a personal note, Commissioner Blake, I would just like to thank you for four years of work, not only on the budget, but on all of the policy. I got to spend many, many hours with you in the boardroom, working on all kinds of programs. You've done tremendous work on the budgets. You've been a champion of internal services, which is rare, but it's the infrastructure that makes government work. So I personally appreciate that very much, but truly have enjoyed working with you over the last four years. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Robby. And I would just comment, I did get my surplus. I got a chance to work with you side by side with you and your expertise and your professionalism, and it's greatly appreciated, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Wow.
Any other comments? Nope?
Ditto.
Ditto?
Yeah, no.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the Friday, December 14, 2018 meeting.
Second.
It's been moved as second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.